Senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. The senators in all in attendance will stand and be led in prayer by the Reverend Alex Evans, Second Presbyterian Church, Richmond, Virginia. Everyone will remain standing and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America by Senate Page Lily Bowling from Williamsburg.
Let us pray. Holy God, Creator and Giver of life and all good things, the great texts of faith call us to love you, Holy One. Love you with heart, soul, mind, and strength in this place today. Keep all hearts and minds open to you and your presence here. Keep all hearts attuned to your purposes, to your possibilities for our lives and for our great Commonwealth. The great texts of every great religion teach us to love others, to treat others as we want to be treated, move in and through each of us today to create an openness to others, a sincere concern for the needs of others. Show us a fresh and effective ways to spread compassion and work for justice, particularly toward the less fortunate, the needy, the vulnerable. And merciful God, you call all of us and especially our elected leaders to serve the public, promote justice, establish peace in the land. Give to these senators here the spirit of wisdom and understanding. Guide them with the spirit of counsel and insight. Grant them the spirit of knowledge. Grace them with your presence. Cover them with your abiding love, especially with the particular challenges that they carry in their hearts, in their lives, with their families, with their districts. Remind all of us, oh God, that we are forever in your care and always accountable to you. Remind us that we are called to serve, to promote the common good. And may our beloved Virginia become more and more a place where prosperity is found, where peace and justice cover the land, where life can be lived in fullness with equal opportunity for everyone, with liberty and justice and hope for all. We pray in your holy name and all the people say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All those in attendance will please record their vote. Aye. Clerk will close the roll.
You have a quorum, Mr. President. Senate Journal for Thursday, February 6, 2020.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hager moves that the reading of the Journal be waived. All in favor waiving the reading of the Journal will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-three, noes four.
Ayes thirty-three, noes four. The reading of the Journal is waived. The clerk will report any communication from the House of Delegates. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasselaw.
Mr. President, I move that we waive any, uh, waive the communications from the House of Delegates, waive the reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the communication from the House of Delegates be waived? All in favor waiving the reading will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-seven, noes two.
Ayes thirty-seven, noes two. The reading of the communication from the House of Delegates is waived. The clerk will report any communication from the governor.
We do not have any, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now comes a time in the morning hour. We have the privilege and the honor of having our honored guest in the gallery in the Senate be recognized. And I'll give my daily reminder, the way this will proceed is that a senator will stand and recognize an individual or group. Uh, I will then offer the warm welcome of the Senate. Uh, and then at the very end, we will all applaud together. I'd like to begin by recognizing the senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you. Today's invocation was offered by the Reverend Alex Evans of Second Presbyterian Church here in Richmond, where he serves since 2008. Alex's experience and energy in ministry include his devotion to interfaith conversations, racial reconciliation, community building and engagement, and care for traumatized police officers, and I ask that you give him the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would Reverend Alex Evans please rise in the gallery? Reverend Evans, thank you so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your tremendous moral leadership, uh, in the Commonwealth of Virginia and that beautiful prayer. Uh, really got us off to the right foot, so we appreciate you. You're welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to the Reverend Alex Evans. Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator D. Staff.
Mr. President, I rise for an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Today we have students from Cape Henry Collegiate in the gallery today, and we'd like to give them the warmest welcome of the Senate. Again, Cape Henry Collegiate.
Thank the senator. Would our young leaders from Cape Henry Collegiate please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. It's wonderful, wonderful to see all your beautiful smiling faces and to see bright young leaders here in your capital, in the Senate of Virginia. Uh, we echo the generous and eloquent words of the senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator D. Staff, and you're welcome back here anytime. Wish you a great school year, uh, and a wonderful summer thereafter. I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our young leaders from Cape Henry Collegiate. Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Morning, Mr. President.
Morning, Senator.
I rise for a motion.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I'd ask the Journal reflect, um, the absence of my seatmate, the senator from Falkir, who's away from the Capitol on pressing personal business.
I thank the senator. The Journal will so note. Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley. You good? All right. Do any other senators wish to be recognized? Is there any other business to come in the morning hour? Seeing none, the clerk will call the calendar.
Senate, Senate calendar for Friday, February 7, 2020. Regular calendar, Senate bills on third reading. Senate Bill 71, a bill relating to possession of firearms, other weapons on school property.
Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Mr. President, can I go by temporarily? There's a floor sub being distributed.
Without objection, Senate Bill 71 will go by temporarily.
Senate Bill 911, a bill relating to parking of vehicles, electric vehicle charging spots, civil penalties.
The junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hashmi.
Thank you, Mr. President. May this, uh, bill go by for the day.
Without objection. Senate Bill 911 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 5, a bill relating to the Board of Education, uniform minimum standards for modern public school buildings.
Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank, Mr. President. To keep it rolling, I'd, uh, ask that Senate Bill 5 go by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 5 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 187, a bill relating to TANF time limitations.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Well, I'm excited to say, Mr. President, I move that my bill pass in speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you. What my bill does is it removes this artificial two-year time limit on TANF where we had required individuals to only stay on TANF for two years. They could take a break and come back and receive additional TANF assistance if so needed. This is a federally funded program. The maximum time limit for individuals to benefit is five years. And the, the individuals, really, they're families. They're primarily single mothers with two children. And we wanted to remove that two-year time limit because frequently, uh, moms are going through training or, um, an educational program to get a certificate. The goal of our public assistance programs, as we all should agree on, is to enable individuals to one day become self-sufficient. And in today's economy, the only way you can become self-sufficient is if you really acquire a skill. And frequently, it takes longer than two years. So this doesn't have a large fiscal impact. There is some impact, as you know, finance put a clause on it, but the impact would be non-general funds. It'd be, uh, using our TANF money. And we sincerely believe, experts have looked at this, I've worked with stakeholders, that this change will make a huge difference in enabling individuals to actually achieve the self-sufficiency that we all really, um, seek through our programs. I sincerely hope it's the pleasure of the body to pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenchain, rise.
I would ask if the senator from Arlington would yield for a question.
Well, Senator, yield.
I will.
Senator, yield. You have the floor.
Mr. President, my question is whether Senator, uh, can tell us whether this two-year time limitation was originally imposed back in 1995 as part of the bipartisan welfare-to-work program adopted, uh, at that time.
Senator has the floor.
Um, I can't answer that definitively. I can say that the two-year time limit, the Department of Social Services has articulated, was, uh, intended to only provide very temporary and limited service to, uh, to recipients with the hopes that they would get into the workforce as quickly as possible. As time has evolved and our economy's evolved, it became very clear that individuals needed longer than two years to acquire jobs that paid enough money to support their families.
Further question?
Uh, Mr. President, I thank the gentle lady, but speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
What I, I would hope that, uh, we might consider voting against this. I, I would, I, I was not here back in 1995, but I will tell you that I was on the Welfare Reform Commission in 1995, and I will tell you also that, uh, this was an integral part of the Clinton administration's, uh, welfare reform. And, uh, Virginia adopted this at the same time that the Clinton administration was advocating this across the country. It's been very successful in Virginia, and I would hope that we would not roll back, uh, this, uh, portion of the code.
Uh, do any other senators wish to be heard other than the patron regarding Senate Bill 187? Seeing none, Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I should note that Virginia is only one of three states that now has an interrupted eligibility period. So there's been acknowledgement across our country that the job training programs are very necessary, and if they take more than two years, individuals should be allowed that opportunity. Uh, I also want to note that the local caseworker would be working with this family, so we would be providing flexibility to really tailor, um, a, a program to fit an individual family with the end result being the family would achieve self-sufficiency. And I just want to note that more than 60% of all new jobs created now require some type of post-secondary education, and only one in six TANF recipients has a post-secondary education of any type. Please, I, I really ask that we not waste any money, that we put, we put our federal resources and whatever state administrative dollars are needed for this program to good work, to good use. Make this program work for the individuals it was intended to help. Again, I ask that the body pass this bill.
The question is, shall Senate Bill 187 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes twenty-nine, noes ten.
Ayes twenty-nine, noes ten. Senate Bill 187 passes.
Senate Bill 48, a bill relating to Virginia Violence Intervention and Prevention Fund.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola. Page four.
Oh, hi. Mr. President, I move that the bill pass, and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, what this bill does is it creates a violence intervention and prevention program. Um, it sets up a fund, and the intent of the fund is to disperse grants to locally-based organizations, uh, grassroots organizations that are working oftentimes to prevent gang violence. Um, dollars could go to hospitals, could go to, um, uh, localities, could go to a number of groups, but the, the real purpose of this is to get boots on the ground in an effort to come up with evidence-based, to fund evidence-based practices that will make a difference, um, in stopping and preventing violence. So I do hope it is the pleasure of the body to adopt this. Uh, there is funding in the governor's budget for this. I also put in a budget amendment. Um, there are many groups across the Commonwealth who are very interested in this legislation, and, um, I ask that the body pass the bill. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 248? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 248 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes twenty-four, noes fifteen.
Ayes twenty-four, noes fifteen. Senate Bill 248 passes.
Senate Bill 382, a bill relating to coverage for prosthetic devices and components.
Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I move the bill pass, and speaking to that motion.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, this bill provides for the coverage of prosthetic devices for those who have experienced loss of limb. Uh, amputees, when they are, are working with their doctor, not all folks can actually get covered under this because not all devices will fit based on, uh, blood flow, based on the fitting, based on, uh, nerves. And so what this does is ensure that those who can have something fitted and does medically work, that it is provided based on, uh, those devices that are within existing coded, um, sections of Medicaid. So it is, does have provisions that, devices that are, they're not experimental. They have been, um, approved, uh, through the federal system, and this would extend and ensure that coverage to those folks for, uh, very much needed devices that, to assist in their lives.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunham, rise.
Mr. President, I, um, am wondering if the patron would yield for a question.
Well, Senator, yield.
I yield.
Senator, yield. You have the floor.
Um, yes, Mr. President. I'm wondering, is this for both private insurance and Medicaid?
Senator has the floor.
So currently, it'd be for private insurance. Currently, it's under the Virginia Benchmark Plan, it is already covered. Uh, so these are already covered, so this is closing the gap on, uh, another narrow band of, of insurance coverage.
Further question?
Mr. President, yes. Could you please tell me which insurances this mandate would then be placed upon? Is it the group marketplace? Is it the individual marketplace? Where, where is this being levied?
Senator has the floor.
So, uh, the answer to the senator is that when the Bureau of Insurance took a look at it, they characterized the coverage of prosthetic devices and an extension of existing essential health benefits rather than a new or an additional, um, existing health benefit for which the Commonwealth would already defray cost. So actually, under the Virginia Benefit Program, most of, I think, all of the plans currently provide some of this coverage. There is a, a gap, I think, of two plans. I'm not sure exactly which one, to the center, uh, that do not cover, uh, fully all the codes that are included.
Further question?
Uh, Mr. President, speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Um, Mr. President, I, um, I, I will speak on every bill that is a mandated benefit because we have been sent with no more important charge for our citizens than to reduce the cost of health insurance. And the way a mandated benefit works is that when an insurance company does elects not to provide that benefit, and I will mention that before we had the Affordable Care Act and we had more diversity in insurance plans, insurance plans offered a lot of elective coverages that people could sign up for, for hearing aids, for other things, and people could, could, um, and in, and in some cases, this is happening now, and this is how it should happen in the free market, people could sign on for that adjunct to their insurance so that they could build that into their plan and their premiums. When we mandate as a state that benefits be included in insurance, what happens is the cost of that service is amortized across the, the, um, policy costs and the premiums for every single Virginian. The intents are always good to make sure that people have access to something. Prosthetics are life-changing, and we really want people to have the best ones, but if we are going to be true to the campaign promises we made, we cannot add mandated benefits to the code because we are increasing Virginians' health insurance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 382? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 382 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes twenty-eight, noes ten.
Ayes twenty-eight, noes ten. Senate Bill 382 passes.
Having voted on the prevailing side by which we just passed 382, I move that it be reconsidered.
Question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 382 pass be reconsidered? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes zero.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes zero. The motion is agreed to.
I move the bill now pass.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 382 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes twenty-nine, noes ten.
Ayes twenty-nine, noes ten. Senate Bill 382 passes.
Senate Bill 421, a bill relating to open-end credit plans, payday lenders, and short-term loans, consumer finance loans, car title lending.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 421 be passed by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 421 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 452, a bill relating to motor vehicle fuel sales tax in certain counties and cities.
Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Uh, Mr. President, um, I move that the bill pass.
Senator has the floor.
By way of explanation, what Senate Bill 452 does is provide a 2.1% wholesale tax, uh, on fuel, motor fuel, uh, in those areas of Virginia that do not already have that, and all the funding would go to the rural areas to help our rural roads. With that explanation, I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 452? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 452 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes twenty-four, noes fifteen.
Ayes twenty-four, noes fifteen. Senate Bill 452 passes.
Senate Bill 561, a bill relating to workers' compensation, compensability of post-traumatic stress disorder incurred by a law enforcement officer or firefighter.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I respectfully ask that, uh, Senate Bill 561 be passed by for the day, sir.
Without objection, Senate Bill 561 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 564, a bill relating to Virginia Hearing Loss Identification and Monitoring System, Language Development for Children Who Are Deaf or Hard of Hearing.
Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Uh, Mr. President, I move that Senate Bill 564 pass, and by way of explanation.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, this is the bill that would add two members to the Board Advisory Committee of the Virginia Hearing Loss Identification and Monitoring System, and it would also provide, uh, the development of milestones to assess children up to age five who are deaf and hard of hearing with regard to their progress. With that explanation, I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 564? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 564 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes zero.
Ayes thirty-nine, noes zero. Senate Bill 564 passes.
Senate Bill 731, a bill relating to electric utility regulation authorized rate of return.
Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 731 pass, and speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this bill requires the State Corporation Commission to set a lower ceiling for possible rate of return, lowering the cap from 3% to 1.5% above the average of comparable utilities. Currently, the SCC is required to set the rate of equity, uh, for investor-owned utilities at a minimum of the average profit earnings of peer utilities, um, which are in the other southeastern states. What this bill does is return us to, um, standard principles of rate-making by saying that that average will be the range and not the floor. I ask that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 731? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 731 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes thirty-six, noes three.
Ayes thirty-six, noes three. Senate Bill 731 passes.
Senate Bill 732, a bill relating to the establishment and operation of a health benefit exchange for the Commonwealth Assessments Department of Taxation Information Sharing.
Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 732 pass, and speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill 732, uh, creates the Virginia Health Benefits Exchange. As you may recall, when the Affordable Care Act passed, states were given the option to either default to the federal exchange or create their own. Um, we were poised at one point to create our own, uh, thanks to the work of, uh, of former Secretary Hazel and, um, the senator from Augusta, but we did not, um, we ran out of time, basically. Uh, but now, we have, uh, seen what other states have done. We have more information, including two states that have diverted from the federal exchange to a state exchange, and this will save, uh, save money and help reduce premiums. Ask the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 732? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 732 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes twenty-nine, noes ten.
Ayes twenty-nine, noes ten. Senate Bill 732 passes.
Senate Bill 853, a bill relating to culturally relevant and inclusive education practices Advisory Committee established.
Senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator Boysko.
Mr. President, I move the bill pass.
Senator has the floor.
Speaking to the bill.
You have the floor.
Um, SB 853 will create, um, uh, an advisory committee that will make recommendations around topics, including slavery, antisemitism, other historically dehumanizing injustice and discrimination events, and, um, will then, those recommendations will be considered by the Board of Education during the 2122 review of the history and social sciences of standard, uh, standards of learning, and I move the bill pass.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 853? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 853 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes twenty-seven, noes twelve.
Ayes twenty-seven, noes twelve. Senate Bill 853 passes.
Senate Bill 991, a bill relating to Department of Social Services Office of New Americans Created, Office of New Americans Advisory Board Created.
The junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hashmi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 991 pass, and speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Uh, SB 991 seeks to establish the Office of New Americans within the Department of Social Services, and this particular agency is designed to work with the existing Office of Newcomer Services, which focuses exclusively on refugee resettlement in Virginia. Uh, with the expansion into the Office of New Americans, we would have the opportunity to support, uh, the, the needs and the, provide resources to all new immigrants into Virginia. Virginia currently is the home of over 1.6 million immigrants, and this will facilitate the process of their acclimation into our society and communities. I move that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 991? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 991 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? All the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll. Clerk will close the roll.
Is twenty-five knows fourteen.
Is twenty-five knows fourteen. Senate Bill nine ninety-one passes.
Returning to page one. Senate Bill seventy-one.
Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just give me a moment. I was distracted by my son's midterm grades. Okay. I move that we reconsider the vote by which the bill was ordered to be, the bill was ordered to be engrossed in advance to his third reading.
Question is, shall the vote by which the bills are engrossed in advance to his third reading be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Is thirty-eight knows zero.
Is thirty-eight knows zero. The motion is agreed to. The senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to waive the reading of the floor substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, this was a bill we spent a lot of time on yesterday. There was a lot of questions, and this has to do with taking the prohibition on firearms at school buildings and extending it to preschools and child daycare centers. And obviously, those are not state-owned, but typically private, private property. So in light of that, the substitute makes two substantive changes. One is, it makes it clear that, and this is on lines thirty-two and thirty-three, that the provisions to child daycare centers only, only apply when children are actually present. So if you have it at a standalone office building or another commercial private building, and the children are not there, then you can't trap somebody, or somebody can't be arrested for being on that site with a firearm. The second part is a little bit more substantive also, and I ask that you please pay attention. It also has a, basically, a carve-out on child daycare standards where the child daycare center has provided written notification to the parents of children if they choose to use armed security. This would be in, for example, where a church chooses to have armed security, and the parents have consented. In other words, not just notification, but also consent from the parents. So I tried to make this as tight as I could, and I spoke to the gentle lady from Portsmouth. She was all right with these amendments, and therefore, I'd ask that you agree to them.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the senator agree to the floor substitute? For what purposes, Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas rise. No? Question is, shall the senator adopt the floor substitute? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is adopted. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank the Senator from Fairfax for his assistance in these amendments. I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I move that rules be suspended and that the bill, the constitutional reading of the bill be dispensed with.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading be dispensed with? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Is thirty-nine knows zero.
Is thirty-nine knows zero. The rules are suspended, and the third constitutional reading is dispensed with. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. With a lot of delight, I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do you want to speak to the bill?
Oh, yes.
Yes, no? Maybe so?
It's all right to be described enough, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. For what purpose, Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peak rise.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask if the Senator from the city of Fairfax will yield for a question.
Will the Senator yield?
I yield.
Senator yield, you have the floor.
Thank you, Senator. I am looking at the consent part on line fifty, and it says, "and has obtained such parent's consent." I assume if, once they receive written notification and leave their children at the daycare, would that be deemed consent?
Senator has the floor.
Well, I would say if I was representing that school, I'd get them to sign something. But he can advise his clients however he wants.
Further question?
Well, Mr. President, further question? Yeah, I'm talking about the purposes of this statute. That's what I'm asking for.
My answer is the same. I think the statute, if I, if I own a private day school and I want to have armed security, I would get a signature from each parent, and I think the language speaks for itself.
All right. Nothing further. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill seventy-one? Seeing now, the question is, shall Senate Bill seventy-one pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Is twenty-two knows seventeen.
Is twenty-two knows seventeen. Senate Bill seventy-one passes.
Page eleven, uncontested calendar.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Returning to page eight of the calendar, having voted on the prevailing side by which Senate Bill seven thirty-one was passed, I would ask that we reconsider that vote, sir.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill seven thirty-one passed be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Is thirty-nine knows zero.
Is thirty-nine knows zero. The motion is agreed to. Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having previously described the bill, I move that it pass.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill seven thirty-one pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Is thirty-eight knows one.
Is thirty-eight knows one. Senate Bill seven thirty-one passes.
Page eleven, uncontested calendar Senate Bills on Second Reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate Bills on the second reading on the uncontested calendar, pages eleven through twenty, that's Senate Bill four through Senate Bill nine forty-eight, be advanced their engrossment in third reading in a block after the adoption of any amendments thereto, and any senator desiring to remove a bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall all Senate Bills on Second Reading on the uncontested calendar on pages eleven through twenty, Senate Bill four through Senate Bill nine forty-eight, be engrossed in advance to their third reading in the block after the adoption of any amendments thereto, and that any senator desiring a bill be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
And just a reminder, we are taking all of the bills on the uncontested second reading all the way through to final passage today. Senate Bill four, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an Amendment.
Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can that come out of the block and go by for the day?
Without objection. Senate Bill four will come out of the block and go by for the day.
Senate Bill six twenty-nine, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute.
Question is, shall the senator adopt the committee substitute? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill forty-two, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator D. Staff.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill one forty-four, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendment.
Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Judiciary Committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would move the amendment from the Committee on Finance.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill two forty-two, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Finance Committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill three seventy-three, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Bass, Senator Dees.
Mr. President, I move adoption of the substitute from the Committee on the Judiciary.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. The senator from Bass, Senator Dees.
Mr. President, I move the amendment from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted.
Senate Bill four thirty-nine, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would, with the recommendation that it be rejected, I would move the Judiciary Committee substitute.
Thank the senator. With the recommendation that it be rejected, the question is, shall the senator adopt the committee substitute? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Substitute is rejected. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move the Finance and Appropriations Committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill four eighty-five, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator D. Staff, is not here. Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill four eighty-six, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
Senate Bill six forty-six, reported from the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources with a substitute.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill seven twenty-four, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
The senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. The senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the amendment from Finance and Appropriations be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
Senate Bill seven forty-seven, reported from the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources with a substitute.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill seven fifty-two, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with a substitute and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill seven sixty-nine, reported from the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources with a substitute.
Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. Stand again to ask for the committee substitute to pass.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill eight seventy-eight, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
Senate Bill nine forty-eight, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Question is, shall the Senate Bills be engrossed in advance to their third reading? That is, all bills except for Senate Bill four. All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The Bills are engrossed in advance to their third reading.
Uncontested calendar Senate Bills now on third reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw. Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate bills that are now on third reading on the uncontested calendar, pages 11 through 20, that Senate Bills 4 through 948, that the rules be suspended, and the third constitutional reading of the titles be dispensed with.
Question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third reading of the titles of the bills be dispensed with? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 39, no zero.
Ayes 39, no zero. The reading of the titles is dispensed with, and the bills are now before the Senate on final passage. Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate bills are now on third reading of the uncontested calendar on pages 11 through 20. Again, that's Senate Bill 4 through 948, that they be placed on their final passage in a block, and any senator desiring to move a bill from a block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the Senate bills now on the uncontested calendar, third reading, pages 11 through 20, Senate Bill 4 through, excluding Senate Bill 4, Senate Bill 948, be placed upon their final passage in the block? With the understanding that any senator desiring a bill be removed from the block, will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill. All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The bills are before us in the block. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 629, Senate Bill 42, Senate Bill 144, Senate Bill 242, Senate Bill 373, Senate Bill 439, Senate Bill 485, Senate Bill 486.
Mr. President.
Senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase.
Could Senate Bill 486 please come out of the block?
Without objection, Senate Bill 486 will be removed from the block.
Senate Bill 646, Senate Bill 724, Senate Bill 747, Senate Bill 752, Senate Bill 769, Senate Bill 878, Senate Bill 948.
Question is, shall the bills in the block pass? That is, all bills except for Senate Bills 4 and 486. All in favor of passage of the bills, will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 39, no zero.
Ayes 39, no zero. The bills in the block pass.
Returning to page 17, Senate Bill 486.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the bill pass in speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. What this bill does, it's a Section 1 bill, and it directs the Department of Agriculture and Commerce to look at the amount of food waste going into our landfills in the Commonwealth, and to come up with strategies for actually preventing that food waste. And part of those strategies would have to be working with our grocery stores and others. Fresh fruit and vegetables, the disposal of those fruits seem to be a very high, let me put it this way, by those who analyze unnecessary waste, the waste of fresh fruit and vegetables apparently is a very high wasted element. And we would do better, we would put less into our landfills if we could reduce the amount of food waste. Moreover, there are people in the Commonwealth who are really suffering food insecurity and could benefit if fresh food and vegetables were made available and not wasted as much as they are. That's the purpose of the study. I think it's a good study, and I would ask that the body pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purposes, the senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. My concern about this bill, you know, I was looking over the fiscal impact statement, and in years 2021 and 2022, there's actually an expenditure of $75,000. And it says that Vdax does not have the staff nor the necessary expertise to conduct the study as prescribed in the bill, and anticipates needing to contract with a consulting firm to conduct the study and compile the results. And, Mr. President, while I understand the very good intentions of the senator from Arlington, my concern is that in efforts of trying to save money, we're actually spending too much money. So, for that reason, while I respect the intent of the bill, is to oppose this bill to prevent waste. Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purposes, Senator from King George, Senator Stewart, rise.
Speak to the bill, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I wasn't going to speak to this and trespass on your time, but since the discussion has ensued, I want to tell you a story. So, the gentlelady's right, from Arlington. And while I was at home at, we were at home for Christmas, my daughter, who's a third year at UVA, was there, and one day, we received a package from, I don't know, FedEx delivered it or whatever, and it was a box. And we opened it, and it was full of pears, apples, mandarins, ginger roots, all kinds of exotic squash that I'd never even seen before. And everything had a little spot on it somewhere, or it was imperfect. And I said, Mary, what is this? And she said, Dad, all of this fresh fruit and vegetables are going into the dumps. So, a secondary business has now come into existence on the Internet. And if you sign up for different levels, you can sign up for $10 a month or a week. I can't, I can't remember exactly what it was. But there were different levels that you could go in and sign up, and depending upon how much you wanted to spend, you could get deliveries every week, every month, every two a week, and everything was perfectly good. It just wasn't like you find at Wegmans on the shelves where it's just perfect. And I think she said she paid $40 for it, and I bet you we got $100 worth of stuff. And it was all wonderful. So, the point of my story is, young people in the free market are figuring this out.
Thank the senator. For what purposes, the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw, rise.
Would the senator from Westmoreland yield for a question?
Well, Senator from King George, yield for a question.
King George.
He's got that look in his eye, Mr. President.
Senator, Senator Yild, you have the floor.
I would just simply ask, Senator, which is better, to receive that or coal ash?
Senator has the floor.
I don't even know how to respond, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 486? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 486 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senator voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 35, noes four.
Ayes 35, noes four. Senate Bill 486 passes.
Regular calendar, Senate bills on second reading. Senate Bill 253, a bill relating to deeds of trust fiduciary duties. The floor amendments have been reconsidered.
Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
Mr. President, may that bill go by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 253 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 612, a bill to establish the Commission for Historical Statutes in the United States Capitol to provide for the replacement of the Robert E. Lee statue in the National Statutory Hall Collection at the United States Capitol. There is a floor substitute.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Yes, Mr. President. And I am sorry, I do not see the floor substitute. So, could that bill go by momentarily?
Without objection, Senate Bill 612 will go by temporarily.
Senate Bill 183, a bill relating to war memorials for veterans. Floor, there's a floor amendment, two floor amendments.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Mr. President, I ask that Senate Bill 183 go by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 183 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 134, a bill relating to school boards, teachers' planning time and planning periods.
Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the bill pass in speaking to it.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, this is a modest bill which gives all of our teachers.
I think we're just engrossing in advance.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Request the bill be engrossed in advance through its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance through its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bills are engrossed in advance through its third reading.
Senate Bill 632, a bill relating to public utilities, energy, storage capacity in the Commonwealth. There are four floor amendments.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parliamentary inquiry, we took care of the committee substitute yesterday, right? Okay. So, Mr. President, seeing all the nodding heads up there, I would move that we waive reading of the four floor amendments, all four of them.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor amendments be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor amendments is waived. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move all four floor amendments in a block.
Senator want to speak to them?
Sure.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I explained this yesterday. This increases the amount of energy storage that's in the public interest in the bill from 1,000 megawatts to 2,700 megawatts. And it also alters the investor-owned utility, privately-owned energy storage percentage from 50-50 to 65, utility-owned, 35% privately-owned and procured. It's my understanding these amendments are part of a broader agreement that was reached between the administration stakeholders and other interest groups. And just so everybody's clear, this energy storage stuff is absolutely critical. If you're going to do wind or solar, you've got to have energy storage because the wind don't blow at night and the sun don't shine. And so, we've got to start figuring this out. It's a huge opportunity. It's been studied, it's been shown it's going to make a lot of jobs, and I would move the amendments pass.
For what purposes, senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Deestef, rise.
Mr. President, will the gentleman yield for a question?
Well, Senator Yild.
I'll yield.
Senator Yild, you have the floor.
Mr. President, can you ask the gentleman, the last time I checked at night, the wind actually does blow. And I wanted to know if it doesn't blow in Fairfax or just only blows in Virginia Beach.
Senator has the floor.
Let's say, gentlemen, unfortunately, I don't have a soccer game to get home to this afternoon, but I do have one back here tomorrow, so we can keep talking if you like. But the wind blows not quite as hard at night, I would say. I'm sure down in Virginia Beach in the ocean, you've got a pretty steady breeze, but I think during the day, it really rages a lot better. And so, at least I know the sun don't shine. If we're going to have as much solar as we do, we've got to have this energy storage.
Mr. President.
Further question?
One further question.
Senator Yild.
I'll yield.
Senator Yild, you have the floor.
Mr. President, if you can ask the gentleman, how much will this increase the rate for the average ratepayer in, let's say, a 2,200-square-foot home?
Senator has the floor.
I would say to the gentleman that that's probably indeterminate because right now, these are brand-new technologies, and they're being developed, and the costs are coming down as the technologies get developed and as they get deployed. And it's important that we have the authority in the code for the SEC to authorize the investment in these technologies so that we can start the process of doing it. Other states have authorized similar provisions, and if we're going to keep up with these other states in becoming, in decarbonizing our electric grid, we need to have this authority. So, I don't have estimates right off the top of my head or that have been given to me. I might be able to, you know, find some in the next 24 hours or by Monday. But I'll say to the gentleman, it's an evolving area. And if you go look online and Google, for example, Tesla's battery performance, there was an article somebody gave me yesterday which showed that Tesla has produced a battery that actually nets money, it actually makes money, which is the only one so far, the only battery. There's about 10 different technologies involved, and they're all evolving. And it just really depends on, as we give the SEC and the utilities the authority to sort of figure out what works best and what to pay, we'll see. But all I know is that if we're going to do solar, solar don't work without energy storage.
Mr. President, speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, in my district, and I think across this Commonwealth, we continue to adopt policies that make people decide who are on fixed incomes between food, between paying their electric bills, and between buying their medication. And every time I see a bill like this, and it's indeterminate what the cost on a ratepayer is going to be, I think about those who are on fixed incomes and making those decisions every day. Do they decide to buy additional food? Do they decide to give up their prescription drugs and not listen to the recommendation of their doctor? Or do they decide to continue to pay the taxes and the additional costs that we keep levying on them? And, Mr. President, I think we really need to think hard about how we're doing this. Thank you very much.
Thank the senator. For what purposes, the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove, rise.
The gentleman, you go for a question, please? The gentleman from?
From Eastern Fairfax?
Yeah, thank you.
Will the senator yield?
I will yield.
Senator Yild, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask the gentleman, can you describe the kind of technologies that are going to be used for storage? Or is this just kind of like, as my cousin Vinny said, magic grits?
Senator has the floor.
If you really want to know, I'd be happy to.
I do.
But first of all, we currently have some technology that's currently deployed in Virginia. You might have been out and visited the Bath Pump Storage Facility where they run the water up and down the mountain. That's one of them. Another one is, there's a similar project at Smith Mountain Lake, or Leesylvania Lake, where they do the same thing. They run the water back and forth between Smith Mountain and Leesylvania Lake. Apco has that one. Beyond that, that's called pump hydro. There's also compressed air that's being used. There's flywheel technology that's being used in Alexandria. I read in the report, there are batteries that are starting to be deployed. We have a couple in Virginia. There are also thermal technologies using molten salt and chilled water. There's latent technology using ice storage and phase-change materials, thermochemical storage, supercapacitors, superconducting magnetic energy storage, power-to-power fuel cells, and power-to-gas. That's the list I have right now that's in the report, which I'm happy to give you the 138-page report if you'd really like to read it. And some of it's been deployed and some of it's being developed.
Further question?
Yes, Mr. President. With gentleman yields for one more question, please.
I'll yield.
Senator Yild, you have the floor.
The gentleman referenced the Bath County hydro facility. That's really not energy storage that is related to this bill. Basically, I think what the gentleman is referring to, and I'll ask him this, is the storage of wind and solar energy. How does the Bath hydro system relate to wind and solar energy storage?
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, and I appreciate the question. Well, I think the way it's been described to me is that the Bath system was created because we have these nuclear power plants where you turn them on and you run them full throttle, and you can't turn them down at night. And so, instead of wasting all that excess electricity at night, we use it to power the Bath facility and run the water up the mountain so that when people turn their air conditioners on, we can open the floodgates and power the air conditioners and use the energy during the day. And so, you know, the solar, solar and wind will be the same way. So that, as we start to take our carbon assets off the grid, whether it's coal or gas, we'll have the solar panels or the wind creating energy during the day. We send that electricity to a battery or a pump storage facility or, you know, one of these other molten salt things or whatever. And then, we turn them on at night, let the energy out so that we don't have to run carbon assets at night. That's the idea.
I thank the gentleman, speaking to the bill.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, I think the bill is well-intentioned. However, technology being what it is, and Tesla's been referenced several times, you know, Tesla's battery technology is their Achilles tendon. You know, those batteries take a lot of energy to produce, they take a lot of energy to store their energy, and they take a tremendous amount of environmental impact when they are replaced. There's a lot, sorry, a lot of rare earth metals that are toxic that come from those battery systems. And I guess where I'm going with this is that this particular bill is going to rely on yet-to-be-developed, reliable technology. And I think we're taking a step a little too soon and too far. So, I hope that everybody will look at that, at this bill and really understand what we're doing with this. It's kind of, yeah, we'll do it when the technology arrives, but it's not here yet. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators, other than the patron, wish to be heard on the floor amendments? There's a senator from Eastern Fairfax, wish to be heard further.
Very briefly.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I said yesterday, at least in the study that came out, they say that the net benefit to taxpayers of 1 gigawatt is between 20, is estimated to be as much as, I think, $23 million. It was actually estimated to save us money. And that's only for 1,000 megawatts. This is for 2,700. And obviously, those numbers will continue to evolve. I think a lot of the comments you've heard, though, relate to the bill in general and not the increase from 1,000 to 2,700, which is what we're debating right now. You can talk about the whole bill tomorrow, Monday again, if you like. But in any event, the amendments are supported by the stakeholders, the administration, everybody else who's been involved in this process, and I think it represents a good compromise. I would hope we'd support it.
Question is, shall the senator adopt the floor amendments? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor amendments are adopted. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
President, I move the bill being grossed in advance through its third reading.
Question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance through its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bills are engrossed in advance through its third reading.
Senate Bill 710, a bill relating to the regulation of sale of electricity under third-party sales agreements, exempts resales of electricity to the owner of a multifamily residential building, et cetera. There is a floor substitute. This is reported from Commerce and Labor.
Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we waive the reading of the floor amendment.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the floor substitute be adopted in speaking to that.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill 710 is the solar freedom bill which would remove barriers to distributed and rooftop solar. The stakeholders on this have continued their negotiations, and we now have peace in the valley on this bill among all of the stakeholders and the administration. And I ask that the floor substitute be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is adopted. Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill being grossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 890, a bill relating to transportation. And they're reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I would move that that go by until Monday. And just to briefly mention it, because it's been on the calendar for a few days-
Senator has the floor.
Well, we've reached an agreement with various parties. I think most people on here will like the final version, and the way we're doing it, the money will be about the same. But it should be, it should be ready to go on Monday. So, I appreciate you all, your patience.
Thank the Senator.
Senate Bill 972, a bill relating to vehicle registration fees, public safety trust fund, reported from the Committee on Transportation with amendments and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Just want to note, Senate Bill 890 will go by for the day without objection, and I'll call on Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President, for the same reasons as articulated by the senior senator, an oxygenarian from Fairfax County, I would ask that this bill, Senate Bill 972, go by for the day. We're working on amendment. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank the Senator. Without objection, Senate Bill 972 will also go by for the day.
Senate Bill 7, a bill relating to the minimum wage, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, first up, wanted to say I appreciate the remarks by the kid from Roanoke. We're also in the process of getting things worked out on there that, you know, would be amenable to more people, so that should be ready to go by Monday, and I'd move that that go by for the day.
Thank the Senator. Without objection, Senate Bill 7 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 14, a bill relating to manufacture, importation, sale, et cetera, of trigger activators, prohibition penalty, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
I would move that we adopt the substitute from the Jita Sherry Committee.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Just briefly, the substitute, I don't know whether you all are aware of this, trigger activators, or what's commonly known as bump stocks, are illegal in America. Possession of that, it's a federal law. ATF banned it as of March 26th of last year, and anyone in possession of that after the 26th of June, I will. But I just want to explain the substitute. It totally mirrors that limit. If you're in possession after that, you face up to 10 years in prison. So, with that, I would move it being engrossed in advance to the third reading.
Question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 34, a bill relating to driver privilege cards penalty, reported from the Committee on Transportation with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The noes have it. The committee substitute is not adopted. Seeing eight hands, we'll have a recorded vote. Question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 21, noes 18.
Ayes 21, noes 18. Substitute, the substitute is adopted. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Mr. President, I've moved the bill-
It's been engrossed in advance?
Yeah, I moved the bill being engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 92, a bill relating to voter registration, pre-registration of persons age 16 or older, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Finance and Appropriations Committee amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted. Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 179, a bill relating to hate crimes, gender disability, gender identity or sexual orientation penalty, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the substitute be agreed to, and that's the substitute from the Judiciary Committee on the Judiciary.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Mr. President, I move that the amendments from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to. Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the bill now be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 272, a bill relating to tethering animals, adequate shelter and space, reported from the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources with amendments.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the committee amendments.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted. Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 384, a bill relating to the Virginia Lottery repeal prohibition against sale of lottery tickets over the Internet, sports betting, problem gambling treatment and support fund, sports betting operation fund penalties, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with a substitute, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute, and there is a floor substitute.
Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, with the recommendation that the substitute from General Laws and Technology be rejected, I move the substitute.
Thank the Senator. With recommendation that it be rejected, the question is, shall the Senate agree to the committee substitute? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. The committee substitute is rejected. Senator from Prince William, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, also with the recommendation that the substitute from the Committee on Finance be rejected, I move the substitute be agreed to, so we can take up the floor substitute.
Thank the Senator. With the recommendation that it be rejected, the question is, shall the floor, committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. The committee substitute is rejected. Senator from Prince William, Senator McPike.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to waive the reading of the floor substitute.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Prince William, Senator McPike.
Move the adoption of the floor substitute, in speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, and members, apologize for the 34 pages on the substitute, but really it deals with three pages within the bill. It addresses a question that came up in Senate Finance from Senator McClellan, the Senator from, senior Senator from Richmond. And it deals with the players' rights and protections. And so, there are provisions that help to define both the biometrics, the collection of those biometrics, and also builds in a mechanism for them to address their complaints. And those are on pages 20, 26, and 31. And happy to explain that, but that is language that was used at the request of players in other states, and we're now including that language in this bill, and that also has the same language in the House bill now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. Question is, shall the Senator adopt the floor substitute? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The noes have it. Floor substitute is not adopted. Seeing eight hands, we'll have a recorded vote. Question is, shall the Senator adopt the floor substitute? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 24, noes 13.
Ayes 24, noes 13. The floor substitute is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess no one has anything to do this afternoon. I'd move that we-
Senator from Prince William, Senator McPike.
I'd move that we engross and advance the bill to third read.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 436, a bill relating to establishment of the Virginia voluntary do-not-sell firearms list penalty, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill being grossed in advance to the third reading, right?
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 473, a bill relating to duties of drivers of vehicles approaching stationary vehicles displaying certain warning lights penalty, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President, I move that the committee amendment be adopted, and by way of explanation, this simply provides that the amber lights, the people who, towing companies, and those who work on the highways, if with amber lights, that the, the, yeah, anyway, have to move over. I move that the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be-
Mr. President.
Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Would the gentleman yield for question?
Well, Senator Yield.
Be glad to you.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
Mr. President, could the gentleman tell us, in the committee amendment, is that the provision that says if it is a non-emergency, non-government vehicle, that you could now be convicted of a Class 1 misdemeanor for not-
Senator has the floor.
Yes, Mr. President. The towing companies are there to do a job to protect the public, along with other highway workers, with regard to, if I can find my notes here, with regard to protecting the public whenever somebody's pulled over to the right. People are now used to pulling over when a blue light or a red light has pulled someone to the side. The law now is reckless driving if you don't pull over to protect the police and others, emergency medical services people. This would simply put the towing vehicles and traffic management vehicles in the same category. It'd become a reckless driving or Class 1 misdemeanor. That's what it would do, and their job is to protect the public, and they have just as much hazard as anybody else. Has that answered you?
Further question?
Mr. President, with gentleman yield for further questions.
Senator Yield.
I'll be glad to you.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
Mr. President, does this amendment also make it now a Class 1 misdemeanor for which you can go to jail for 12 months if you don't move over for a refuse collection vehicle or trash truck?
Mr. President, it has to do with towing vehicles and traffic management vehicles. That's all.
And Senator, before we get a little more in depth, and I don't want to stop you, but this committee amendment only deals with adding the clause and not the substance of the bill, so could we have that debate on third read?
Mr. Chairman, that was my original question, was told otherwise, so thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thanks, Senator. Thanks, Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted. Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President, I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 588, a bill relating to tax authority of localities parity between cities and counties, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt the substitute from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
I move that the bill now be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 621, a bill relating to open space and conservation easements rule of construction, reported from the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources with amendments.
Senator from Bath, Senator Deeds.
Mr. President, I move the committee amendments.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted. Senator from Bath, Senator Deeds.
Mr. President, I move engrossment and advancement of the bill to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 707, a bill relating to landlord and tenant rights and responsibilities, explanation and remedy for material noncompliance, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee substitute be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. The senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee amendment be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted. The senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 717, a bill relating to congressional and state legislative districts standards and criteria, reported from the Committee on Privileges and Elections with a substitute.
Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. The senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 761, a bill relating to Department of Motor Vehicles drivers license eligibility, reported from the Committee on Transportation with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I move that the Committee on Transportation substitute be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is adopted. The Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I move that the bill now be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 776, a bill relating to wetlands protection, living shorelines, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendment.
Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis.
Mr. President, I move the Finance and Appropriations Amendment be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is adopted. The Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis.
Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed and moved on to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 922, a bill relating to Virginia lottery internet sales, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that the substitute from the Committee on General Laws and Technology be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is adopted. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading, sir.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 936, a bill relating to charitable gaming Texas Hold'em poker tournaments, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendments.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are adopted. The Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having done that, I'm going to go all in and move to engross the bill.
Glad you didn't fold. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 971, a bill relating to the gaming in Virginia penalties, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with a substitute, and there is a floor substitute.
Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Mr. President, I've been asked to request this to go by for the day, so I'm asking you to go by for the day.
Without objection, Senator. Senate Bill 971 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 1004, a bill relating to Wildlife Corridor Action Plan, reported from the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1007, a bill relating to stormwater management inspections, reported from the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources with amendments.
Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendments to be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are agreed to. Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean to sit down. I'd ask that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1030, a bill relating to dangerous captive animal exhibits penalty, reported from the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Natural Resources with amendments.
Senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the amendments be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are adopted. Senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill.
I ask that the bill be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1038, a bill relating to creation of the Hampton Roads Transportation District Regional Transit Program, reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with a substitute.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I apologize in advance, but I'm another one of those people who need to have a bill go by for the day.
No worries, Senator. Without objection, Senate Bill 1038 will go by for the day.
Mr. President.
Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
I am sorry to ask, but having voted on the prevailing side by which Senate Bill 71 on page 1 was passed, could we please reconsider that vote?
Question is, shall the vote by which Senate Bill 71 passed be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 39, no 0.
Ayes 39, no 0. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass, speaking to the bill. The bill expressly clarifies that no person to possess a firearm on school property other than those persons expressly authorized by statute, and that is in essence, the essence of the bill.
I thank the Senator.
Mr. President, I move that the bill pass.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 71 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll. Ayes 21, no 18. Senate Bill 71 passes. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to waive the reading of the floor amendment, or is it a substitute?
Floor substitute.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move to waive the reading of the floor substitute.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the floor substitute be agreed to.
Senator has the floor.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, in the substitute, you will find all of the proposed amendments that were agreed to on February the 5th, and so with that, Mr. President, I will just explain that the commission that's going to be established will have the responsibility to provide for the replacement of the Robert E. Lee statue in the National Statutory Hall Collection in the United States, and to recommend to the General Assembly as a replacement a statue of prominent Virginia citizen of historic renown or renowned for distinguished civil or military service that is compatible with the historical character and design of the United States Capitol. And with that explanation, Mr. President, I move that the bill pass.
I thank the Senator. For what purposes?
I move the floor substitute pass. Yes, sir.
What purpose is senior Senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase Rice?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of clarification, this is third constitutional read.
This is the floor substitute.
Okay, thank you.
You want to speak to the substitute? Or do you want to speak on passage?
I would like to speak on the substitute.
Okay, Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and while I respect the patron of the bill submitting the substitute, I've read it over and looked at the commission that's on there, and my concern is still that basically we're still going to be taking down this monument of Robert E. Lee, which I have a lot of concerns over, and I'm going to recommend that we continue to object to the substitute. I don't think it's any better, honestly, than the original, and I ask that we vote against this bill. Thank you, or the substitute, thank you.
What purpose is Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Speak to the substitute.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the body, I did not support the original version of this bill, but the substitute has a significant difference, and actually the commission has a little bit broader authority in determining whether or not the Robert E. Lee statute should stay, and if not, then what would be an appropriate replacement, so I want to make sure that there was a key distinction made in that regard.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding the floor substitute? Question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the floor substitute is adopted. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Page 39, uncontested calendars, Senate Bills on first reading.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate Bills on first reading, on the uncontested and regular calendars, that's pages 39 through 60, Senate Bill 3 through Senate Bill 1088, that the rules be suspended and the first constitutional reading of the titles be dispensed with.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended in the first reading of the titles of Senate Bills on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 39 through 60, Senate Bill 3 through Senate Bill 1088, be dispensed with? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 37, no 0.
Ayes 37, no 0. The reading of the titles is dispensed with. The senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I inquire. Senator, we're going to, you want to make a motion?
The bills have to go by for the day. I move the bills, said bills go by for the day.
Thank the Senator. Question is, shall the Senate Bills on the uncontested and regular calendars now on second reading go by for the day? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bills will go by for the day.
Uncontested calendar, Senate Joint Resolution on third reading. Senate Joint Resolution 81, directing the Joint Commission on Technology and Science to study consumer data privacy in the Commonwealth report that there is a floor amendment.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, having voted on the prevailing side, I move that we reconsider the vote by which the joint resolution was ordered to be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Question is, shall the vote by which the joint resolution was engrossed in advance to its third reading be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 37, no 0.
Ayes 37, no 0. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we waive reading of my floor amendment, even though that'll take longer than reading it.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the floor amendment, speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Senator Donovan's study about data privacy. My two- or three-word amendment just ensures that consumer privacy advocates will be included in the study, that's all it does. I would ask you to support it.
Thank the Senator. What purpose Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan, rise.
Mr. President, I just rise to encourage the body to support the amendment.
Thank the Senator. Question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the floor amendment is adopted. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move to engross and advance the bill to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is engrossed in advance to its third reading. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move that we suspend the rules and waive the reading, the third constitutional reading of the bill.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading be dispensed with? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 36, no 0.
Ayes 36, no 0. The rules are suspended and the third constitutional reading is dispensed with. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move that the body pass this bill. This bill basically just has the Joint Commission on Technology to look at data privacy in Virginia with a group of stakeholders. We've added one to that list so that we can get a handle on what we might be able to do to protect consumer privacy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Joint Resolution 81? Seeing now, the question is, shall the Senate agree to Senate Joint Resolution 81? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the Senate agrees to Senate Joint Resolution 81.
Uncontested calendar, Senate Joint Resolutions on second reading. Senate Joint Resolution 15, requesting the Department of Education to study the teacher licensure process and the assessment requirements therein for any inherent biases that may prevent minority teacher candidates from entering the profession. Report. Reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendments.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Mr. President, I move that the committee amendments be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are agreed to. Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
I move that the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Joint Resolution 38, directing the Joint Commission on Technology and Science to study the safety, quality of life, and economic consequences of weather and climate-related events on coastal areas in Virginia. Report. Reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with amendment.
Senior Senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure to everyone's relief, I'm here to move that we adopt the committee amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the Senate adopt the committee amendment? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the Senate adopts the committee amendment. Senior Senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Mr. President, I move we engross and advance the bill to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Joint Resolution 53, requesting the Department of Environmental Quality to study revised priority ranking criteria for grants from the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund to include reduction of nitrogen pollution. Report. Reported from the Committee on Finance and Appropriations with an amendment.
Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis.
Mr. President, I move the Finance and Appropriations Amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is adopted. Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis.
Mr. President, I move that the resolution be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is engrossed in advance to its third reading. Senior Senator from.
House Communication.
With the House Communication. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that we waive the reading of Communications from the House of Delegates.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the Communication from the House of Delegates be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading, will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 35, no 3.
Ayes 35, no 3. The reading of the Communication from the House of Delegates is waived. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules be suspended and House Joint Resolution 199 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and House Joint Resolution 199 be taken up for immediate consideration? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Any senators desire to change their vote? Any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk close the roll.
Ayes 38, no zero.
Ayes 38, no zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Clerk will please read the title.
House Joint Resolution Number 199, commending William H. Goodwin, Jr.
Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Mr. President, I move the resolution be agreed to. It is the same resolution we passed yesterday here in the Senate.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The resolution is agreed to. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I inquire of the clerk. Does that complete the calendar for today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do any senators wish to be recognized?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Could we return to the morning hour?
Without objection, we will return to the morning hour. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if the group is still available in the gallery, but earlier today, we had, well, you know, today is National Red Day. You can tell by the number of us on the floor who are draped in red in some way. Cardiovascular disease claims the lives of one in three women. And that's about one woman every 30, 80 seconds. Nearly 6% of stroke deaths are in women, who also have a higher lifetime risk of stroke than men. Cardiovascular disease, also known as CVD, kills more women than the total combined deaths for cancer, accidents and diabetes. CVD claims the lives of more black women than all forms of cancer, accidents, assaults and Alzheimer's disease combined. Mr. President, representing the American Heart Association today in the gallery is Chelsea Bennett with the American Heart Association. It sounds like they're still in the gallery, Mr. President. I wish you would give to them the very warm greetings of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would Chelsea Bennett and representatives from the American Heart Association, please rise to the gallery if you're able? Chelsea, thank you so much for being with us here today. Thank you for your tremendous work around such an important issue. And we're grateful for all that you do to help everyone, particularly women, who deal with this very, very serious health issue. So we appreciate you. Wish you nothing but luck. I'd echo the eloquent and generous words of the senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas. And I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to Chelsea Bennett and the American Heart Association. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell. Now, they're still here? No, they're right there.
They are? Oh, I'm sorry. Great. I rise for an introduction. Can we return to the morning hour?
We're still there. Senator has the floor.
So I rise for an introduction. Sorry, Mr. President. So joining us in the gallery are some representatives from CASA. CASA is a Northern Virginia group that's been together since 1985 to advocate on behalf of the Latino community in Northern Virginia. They're here to fight for many priorities, including our Licencias Para Todos, which is a bill that will hopefully be voting on on Monday. But, Mr. President, I would hope you give them the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from CASA in the gallery please rise if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today, and thank you for your great advocacy and wonderful work on behalf of so many people. We appreciate your presence and your capital. And I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends from CASA.